Thank you, everyone. As always, there were no decisions made while we were in executive session discussing personnel or matters of personnel. And thank you for joining us tonight for our workshop as well as our regular board meeting. The next item on the workshop agenda is a report from Chairman Caswell from the Finance and Facilities Committee. Steve?
Right, and if we have Adam giving his...
He's not here. Oh. There's Donna, I couldn't see her.
Yeah. We're going to get an update on a piece of our 24-25 budget.
Good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
So what you have before you is the current working expenditure budget for the 24-25 fiscal year. Although there's three columns, all of the expenses are the same and they correspond back to the three different revenue scenarios that we have. Currently, we're expecting to have the same level of expenses no matter which revenue assumption is chosen. So currently, we're at about $67, a little over $67 million in the expenditure budget, which is about a 3% increase over the 23-24 year. Personnel services are going to increase around 2%. Within the personnel services, we have budgeted a 4% increase for due quest-of-living and merit increases and a 4% increase for management confidential. For CSCA, that contract ends 12/31/2024, so currently, there's no quest-of-living increases budgeted for CSCA, but we do have merit increases for those who are be eligible for the merit increases. Also included in the budget is the cost of full-time promotions. When this was created, I had thrown in a dollar amount just as an estimate because we didn't know what they were going to be, so it's a little bit higher than the actual number, so that will be adjusted in the next version that you see next month. We had savings of about $175,000 for position realignment. And then, things that we're currently working on that are not included in the personnel number is the number of hours budgeted for student employees. It seems to be over-budgeted for this year, so we might be able to reduce that a little bit. And there's a consideration of eliminating some of vacant positions. So that's personnel. Fringe benefits overall are increasing just under 5%. There's increases for insurance, including dental insurance. Retirement contributions are increasing a little over 4% due to the increase in salaries and then increase in payroll and other taxes also related to the salary increases. Equipment is remaining flat at $100,000. Between the capital FFNE money, grant funding, foundation funds, and if necessary, the use of fund balance, we feel that we have enough funds available to cover any equipment needs we have, so we don't feel the need to increase equipment at this point. And then contractual currently over is budgeted for 4% increase. Some areas that are increasing: bad debts, food service, legal fees. We have contract negotiations starting in the fall, so we'll have an increase in legal fees. Insurance, the general insurance goes up every year. Advertisement, advertising expenses have been going up because we're doing more digital advertising, which very effective but also expensive. Some decreases are in maintenance and IT contracts. Printing, because of the SUNY Print Initiative, we're expecting to reduce the number of copier printers on campus, which will result in a significant savings in the maintenance contracts. We're also seeing some decreases in supplies, utilities, and travel. Now, these numbers will change, but I don't anticipate that there'll be any significant difference one way or the other. So are there any questions?
Any questions for AVP Roca? Just to remind everybody that the last presentation we saw last month was on revenues, this is on expenses, and I believe we'll be taking our acts on the road again to go to county leadership as well to share with them the idea of what the expenses will be. So, thank you, Donna, very much.
You're welcome.
I know, that's it.
The board member.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is an educational presentation. Dr. Carlo, Melissa. There you are. Trustees, you have the sheets in your packet as well.
Okay. So... Just one second, please. Come on. All right, my apologies. So I am here to present a interim Chief Diversity Officer update. So I'm going to start by showing the current Diversity Council mission. So on the screen, you will see the current mission for the Diversity Council. This mission statement does need to be updated, and it will be one of the recommendations once a new Director of Diversity and Compliance is identified and appointed. But for now, this is the mission statement that we are operating under for the Diversity Council. And it reads, in case you can't see from afar, Diversity Council, I'm sorry, Duchess Community College is committed to the values and goals of diversity, equity, and inclusion, and to providing a teaching and learning environment that's respectful of and welcoming to all. So since being appointed in this interim role in the fall, there have been primary roles that I have really focused on, and those roles have been to restructure the Diversity Council, increase communication, engage with students, and impact campus climate. In the subsequent slides, I will be addressing each of these goals a little further. All right. So we started the year by revamping the Diversity Council. We expanded the membership of the Council by inviting leadership from our various affinity groups such as Hispanic Heritage Month, the LGBTQIA+ Committee, Black History Month Committee, the Holocaust and Genocide Studies Lecture Series, Women's Activities Committee, and AWDCC to join as members. In addition to that, we asked Linda Bertolosi from our Accommodative Services to participate and included membership from the Family Partnership Center. The structure of the leadership of the Council, we mirrored it to practice that of the PACT Committee. So we have a faculty co-chair and a staff co-chair. In addition to that, we have recruited three students to serve on the committee, and these students represent a variety of areas. One of them is a first-year resident student, the second student is a first-year commuter student, and the third is a student who is graduating this spring. Finally, we established four subgroups to focus on four particular areas, and those areas are DEI Plan Update, which also needs to be updated in addition to our mission statement, a Forums and Trainings Subcommittee, which their primary focus is to help coordinate student forums that are geared towards adult learners, learners with learning disabilities, as well as faculty and staff training. We have a third committee, which is Community Building, and their focus will be on campus-wide initiatives, including our flag display, which I'll talk about momentarily, and a Communications and Outreach Committee, which their primary focus is to help engage our on-campus affinity We appointed two co-chairs to the Diversity Councils. So we have Thomasine Oliphant. Thomasine serves as an instructor in the Human Services Program, and Stephen Posada is the coordinator for the EOP Program. He also has worked as a former Diversity Admissions Counselor here at DCC. And together with me, we have worked at setting the agenda and providing leadership for the Diversity Council this year, and we meet regularly with Dr. Jordan and Dr. Rogers. In regards to communication, we established two email addresses so that members of the campus community could reach out to us if needed. So the first one is the Chief Diversity Officer email. That email does go directly to me as well as to Dr. Rogers, and that is primarily for anyone who wants to reach out if they have questions or they want to perhaps speak to someone about issues that of concern, they can reach out directly to us. In addition, we have the Diversity Council email, which goes to the two diversity co-chairs as well as myself, and that email in particular, we are recommending that the campus community use if they want to provide any updates about events, activities, et cetera, that they would like us to advertise. In addition to that, we have worked with marketing and communications to ensure that we have a calendar of events of all DEI-related workshops, trainings, forums, et cetera, that happen on campus, so that is updated and filtered through the CDO. So what happens is, let's say, an individual from the Women's Action Committee wants to share events about Women's History Month, they would filter that information through the CDO and we would share it with the marketing communications. We just want to make sure that we have one point of reference and we're getting information out to the community. In addition to that, last semester, I conducted updates to our PSO, which is our shared governance body, or one of our shared governance bodies, PSA, which is the Professional Services Alliance, and Student Government. And we rejoined the SUNY CDO network, which is a collection of all the CDOs from the various SUNY schools across the state. Engaging with students. So for the first time ever, last semester, we had student participation at the annual SUNY Cortlandt Student Diversity Conference, and I highly recommend that this is an ongoing event. It happens in November, so once the fall starts, I would suggest looking for students that are interested and motivated in attending. It's a long day, but really, really exciting activity for students to participate in. And we also hosted our first over-student forum, and that was led by Dean Wendy Mirage-Taylor from Vassar College, and she conducted a workshop titled "Th thriving, not just surviving." These are some photos from that event. The workshop focused on how to nurture diversity, equity, and inclusion to promote a flourishing campus community. That event was held in the residence hall, so it was a cosponsored event, and student activities helped support the event by providing pizza, beverages, and cookies. Last spring, we, a survey actually, went out from institutional research to the campus community, and the students, faculty, and staff were asked to identify their country of origin. At that time, approximately 64 individual countries were identified. These are some of the flags from some of those countries. So we wanted to see if that was a good indication of the diversity on campus. So at our ConvoCon event at the beginning of the spring semester, we hosted a table and we had an activity called "Name That Flag." The goal was to see how many flags individuals can name. We have some work we need to do.
Led by me. Led by me. I got United States, Mexico, Japan, and one other, that was it. Humiliating.
Yeah, we definitely have some work that needs to be done. But interestingly, we did find out that there were a number of individuals that did not find their countries on the board. So we relaunched the survey, and this time, we had over 100. So there are over 100 individuals, or I'm sorry, there are over 100 different countries of origin represented within our community. So we ordered sample flags, two sizes. We do have a location in mind, which is the location in between the Ritz Lounge and the theater, and the intention is to have a hall of flags to be displayed in that area. So I have given the two sample flags to Bridgette Anderson, and she will be working with her team to kind of put them up, oops, I'm sorry, to put them up, and then Dr. Jordan can decide on the size that we want to go with, and then we'll move forward with ordering and working with Bridgette and her team for the installation. I think it's going to be very impressive, because 100 flags, that's a lot. And that is it.
Trustees, colleagues, anybody have any questions for Melissa?
That's impressive. Thank you.
Well, again, we saw this through various committees as well, meetings, but it looks more fun not seeing it on Zoom, actually, to be present here to see it up there.
Yes.
Particularly the flags, so I can't wait to see the display when there's that many up there. And I really was that bad with flags. I haven't had geography since, I think, high school or something, maybe elementary school.
Will this be an installation that you can continue to add to?
Yes.
Lovely.
Definitely. We've had some recommendations that have come out of the Diversity Council and also to ensure inclusivity, so possibly looking at for individuals that have visual impairments, seeing if there's ways to have either an auditory piece to it or some sort of braille or something. So there's definitely some ideas that are floating around, and we'll have to discuss what's the best options. But thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Carlo. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda are liaison reports. First is from the DCC Foundation, Trustee Castella.
Duchess Community College Foundation received a $10,000 gift at the Celebration of Giving event. Tim Massey and Pete Clark have created the Marjorie H. Clark Paralegal Scholarship. The fund is over $100,000 at this time. Diana presented at the SUNY CCCAO in January, Small But Mighty Shops. She is presenting two sessions at the SUNY CUAD in June. She's also facilitating and presenting at the CASE National Conference in October, Board Chair, Executive Director, pre-conference workshop, and she completed the Yale School of Management Women's Leadership Program. Congratulations, Diana. Upcoming events, the gala is April the 6th. I hope you've got your tickets. I have mine. Holocaust Remembrance Event, April the 18th. Honors Convocation, May the 15th. Golf Tournament, May the 20th, and Foundation Board Meeting, May the 23rd.
Any questions for Frank? Thank you. The next item would be a report from the DCC Association Liaison, and we have our meeting coming up in a month.
Twenty-second, end of April.
April 22nd, I believe.
Yeah, yeah.
But in the meantime, just to apprise everyone, we have a small working group that has come together to discuss potentially refinancing dormitory, and we made great strides last time, working with a consultant, a consultant, a bank officer. This bank has a division that specializes actually in college finance and college construction dormitories specifically, so we'll be pursuing that and then we'll report that out ultimately. But it's actually good news that we've heard, I believe, because I haven't felt like there was a lot of good news about the dorm for a while, except for the people who live there, which I love, and who work there, which we love. Before I close the workshop, I just wanted to take an opportunity to introduce County legislator Brendan Lawler, who's at the very end down there. Brendan is one of our liaisons appointed by the legislature to attend. Steve is actually, even though he's a legislator, he's a board member, he's trustee himself, so he doesn't go back and report, but really, he does too. At any rate, it's just a way that we have more of our legislators here to keep, if other legislators ask questions, Brendan or Steve can answer questions as we go. Thank you for being here, Brendan, as well. That concludes the workshop. Let me start that over again. Let me call the meeting to order officially, because of our business meeting. Steve, would you like to join us in pledging allegiance? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Ponticello, may you please call the roll.
Mr. Frank Castella?
Present.
Mr. Stephen Caswell?
Present.
Ms. Mai Ching Kha?
Present.
Ms. Darah Cloud?
Here.
Mr. Michael Prey?
Here, Rebels.
Ms. Angela Fleslin?
Present.
Ms. Lisa Garty?
Present.
Mr. Yves Guzman? Ms. Evelyn Panijji?
Present.
Ms. Linda Pratt?
Here.
Quarm, present.
Thank you. I'd also just please note that Trustee Fleslin over on your screen to the right is actually joining us from a trip to Hawaii. That's how devoted she is to this place. Thank you, Angela. The next item on the agenda is an approval of the agenda. Has everyone had a chance to review it? Make a motion to approve this presented?
Motion.
Thank you, Linda. Frank Seconddun, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names or abstentions? Motion carries. Joy, there was no public comment tonight, correct? Next item on the agenda is Consideration of the Minutes for our February 27th meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review them?
Motion to approve minutes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Angela. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names or abstentions? Motion carries. The next item is committee reports. The first committee will be Academic and Student Affairs Chair Lisa Garty.
I've missed the meeting.
But that's right, what am I saying? You hear the resolution.
All right.
Right, you did miss.
We had the same presentation as we did tonight on diversity and compliance. Tom, Thomas, Dusk, and Neo provided the committee with an update on the PSA and what they've been working on over the first six months of shared governance. Some of the items discussed were campus presentations, recommendations being brought forward to the president on alternative work modalities, student workers, and the upcoming election for the PSA Executive Committee. Michael Adams provided the committee with an update on the PSO and spoke on concerns brought to his attention by members of the PSO and students. He addressed effective communication, campus culture, alternative work modalities, transportation, transparent decision-making, staffing levels in the Health Center, professional development and training on classroom technology. Dr. Raymond Houston spoke to the committee about recommended changes to the 2024-25 academic calendar. The recommended changes would consist of modifying the calendar to start the spring 2025 term after Martin Luther King Day, which would allow for more students to register for classes. And finally, informational updates. Dr. Houston provided the committee with recommendations being brought forward on promotion and tenure. Also, on sabbatical requests, Dr. Jordan spoke to the committee about the compilation of notes for the Board Action Plan. The document consists of items collected from our Board Retreat regarding opportunities for improvement. The Board Action Plan is a document that the Board may own and adopt. Chair Dupree will bring a final copy of the Board Action Plan forward for approval at the April Board Meeting timeframe. And a reminder was provided to the committee on the date and time for the next Board Dinner with student leaders and the FCC Wellness Chair.
Thank you. Any questions for Dara?
Resolution.
Yep, a resolution.
Resolution.
Prepared for the academic calendar? Did we get it? Did you have it?
I think it's back.
If you don't, I have it.
Is it back here?
Yeah, I have it. Number 30?
Number 30. I have, I should have it for a little bit. Yes. All right. And I offer the following resolution and move for its adoption. Whereas a review of the college's academic career was undertaken with input from faculty, staff, and students, and whereas it's been determined that a later start date for the spring semester is the potential to increase enrollment and would be beneficial to both students and the college, and whereas the summer sessions are being reviewed to determine the most reasonable schedule for our students, now therefore be it resolved that approval is hereby given to revise the academic calendar to change the start date for the spring semester to January 21, 2025, through May 13, 2025, and revise the schedule for Summer Session 1 to begin on May 20, 2025, through June 26, 2025. And be it further resolved that this change will be effective starting in spring 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Lisa. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names or abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dara. Next item on the agenda is Board Policy. Chair Guzman is, fortunately for him, away on vacation in Mexico, so Trustee Pratt is going to make the presentation tonight.
Okay. We met on Wednesday, March 13th, and similarly to the Academic and Student Affairs Committee, Dr. Jordan spoke to the Policy Committee about the Board Action Plan. And to recap, the document consists of the items that were collected from the Board Retreat regarding the opportunities for improvement. The Board Action Plan is a document that the Board may adopt. It is up to the Board to refine it. The final copy of the Board Plan will be brought forward by, for approval at the Board Meeting in April. Chairman Dupree will be leading that. And then, we had informational updates. Dr. Jordan discussed Board policy development with the committee. The first set of the new policies that the president will begin working on with us as a committee is a policy on health services, artificial intelligence, and a policy on policies. There was also a reminder to the committee of the date of the next Board Meeting and the student leaders dinner, which we had tonight, which was great, and we had no resolutions. So that is it.
Any questions for Linda? There being none, the next committee report is Personal and Community Relations. Chair Fleslin is here, but she has ceded authority tonight over to Chair Partey?
Frank.
Oh, you're going to read the resolutions, that's right, sorry.
Indeed. I offer the following resolution and move its adoption. Be it resolved that based upon the recommendation of the President of the College, the following faculty member be granted tenure effective September 1, 2024. Megan McCarthy, Assistant Professor in the Department of Business, Architecture, and Construction Professions. And be it further resolved that based upon the recommendation of the President of the College, the further faculty members are promoted in rank effective September 1, 2024, from Assistant Professor to Associate Professor. Teresa Burke, Department of Allied Health and Biological Sciences. Kevin Lang, Department of English and Humanities. Catherine Espinoza, Department of Allied Health and Biological Sciences. Megan McCarthy, Department of Business, Aviation, and Construction Professions. Mariana Malo, Department of Allied Health and Biological Sciences. Matthew Murray, Department of History and Government and Economics. From Associate Professor to Full Professor, spit it out. Tommy Castello, Department of Performing Visual Arts and Communications. Tina Iaraca, I pronounced that correctly, Iaraca, Department of English and Humanities. And Teresa Scaria, and Department of Nursing. For a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? I'll just make, well, quickly, let's give them all a rounded hand for being promoted. Right, right. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So getting tenure is a big thing. That's a great thing, so it's being promoted. I want to, again, congratulate all those individuals. Thank you, Frank.
I also offer the following resolution and move its adoption. Be it resolved that based upon the recommendation of the President of the College, the department upon resources in the 2024-2025 budget, the following members of the faculty are granted sabbatical leave for the time period and pay indicated. Dr. Michael Bowden, Associate Professor, Department of History, Government, and Economics for the 2024 Fall Semester at full pay. Renee Lathrop, Professor, Department of Physical Sciences, Engineering Technology for the 2025 Spring Semester at full pay. Give a second.
Second.
Thank you, Linda. Any further discussion? Let's again congratulate the two individuals on their successful applications for sabbaticals, and I think the process went very smoothly, at least more smoothly this year than it has in the past, thanks to our President, Jordan.
Let's skip one round.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names or abstentions? And motion carries as well. Frank?
I also offer the following resolution and move its adoption. Be it resolved that based upon the recommendation of the President of the College, the early retirement of Bridgette Anderson, Associate Vice President Administration Campus Facilities, is hereby approved to be effective August 31, 2024. And be it further resolved that approval is granted to pay the appropriate benefits earned. And be it further resolved that in recognition of her dedicated service to Duchess Community College, she be granted a meritorious status upon her retirement. And be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees extends its sincere appreciation to Ms. Anderson for her valuable contribution to the college's educational program during her tenure, and wishes her the very best in her retirement and future endeavors.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I'm just going to say, I'm really sad because Bridgette's been one of a great person to work with since I was first appointed. She's one of the ones few left, the originals, when I was first appointed, but we wish her lots of success in her future. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names or abstentions? And motion carries unanimously.
I offer the following resolution and move its adoption. Be it resolved that based upon the recommendation of the President of the College, the retirement of Ahmed Ismail, Associate Professor of the Department of Business, Aviation, Construction Professions, is hereby granted effective August 21, 2024. And be it further resolved that approval is granted to pay the appropriate benefits earned. And be it further resolved that in recognition of his dedicated service at Duchess Community College, Professor Ismail be granted a meritorious status upon his retirement. And be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees extends its sincere appreciation to Professor Ismail. to Professor Ismail for his valuable contributions to the college's educational program during his tenure and wishes him the very best in retirement and future endeavors. Need a second?
Second.
Thank you, Evelyn. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names or abstentions? And motion carries as well. And my apologies, I must need new reading glasses. I deleted, I skipped over Finance and Facilities, I think also because we had a last minute change in that, that I wasn't even sure it was still on. So at any rate, Chairman Caswell, my apologies.
No problem. So, the committee met back on Monday, March 11th. Dr. Jordan updated the committee on the legislative meetings that took place in the month of March, and Adam Rathburn provided the committee with a short presentation on working scenarios of expenses to be expected for the 24-25 budget, which you saw in the workshop session earlier. And you'll see, Adam has a leading role in our committee meeting this month, as you'll hear in my next few comments. Adam provided the committee with an update on proposals to strengthen the college's cybersecurity system. The college has received two quotes and proposals for cybersecurity and improvements to the environment. This item remains a high priority as the college is susceptible to a cyber attack without an update to our current data domain. A resolution will be presented in a moment. Adam Rathburn provided the committee with an update on the Cisco phone system located on campus. We're in the process of testing out new environments to replace the phone system and reduce costs. Adam updated the committee on the college's virtual computing environment. The current environment is coming to end of life, and there's currently no updates that exist to upgrade the environment. SUNY is in the process of working to identify a solution to this issue. Adam Rathburn updated the committee on the current dental plan and the need to offer a plan that is comparable to the CSEA contract based on the DU contract. Adam finally advised the committee that the college has been approached by T-Mobile requesting to purchase two communication frequencies. So more, more information will be forthcoming on this item. So the one resolution that I have for tonight, I offer the following resolution and move its adoption. Whereas the college has, while there have been sharp raises in the volume and velocity of ransomware attacks, and the college's current backup systems are over 10 years old and do not have the data protection technologies needed, whereas, and whereas backup systems are critical to preserving sensitive data files from ransomware, theft, sabotage, and accidental loss, and whereas a three-year quote was received from Distributed Technology Group for Power Protect Data Domain 6900, which is a technology to improve the college's cybersecurity and help protect against a possible cyber attack, and whereas funds for data domain technology are available through the college's fund balance, and whereas Power Protect Data Domain 6900 is on New York State contract and complies with the college's procurement policy, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the purchase of Power Protect Data Domain 6900 through the college fund balance in the amount of 172,600, excuse me, 172,968.79.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Linda. Any further discussion or questions on this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names or abstentions? And motion carries unanimously as well. This also underscores the importance of keeping a healthy fund balance. And to underscore what I should have said at the beginning of when I went to committee reports is that all these items that are voted upon tonight were discussed in committee before they were presented to the entire committee. Next item on the agenda is Report of the Student Trustee. Trustee Chinkon.
So there's quite a bit on my thing tonight.
Good.
Although I'm doing it on my phone, so.
That's okay.
So at the, we had a student government meeting today, and two clubs have been approved, one being the Active Minds Club and the, another being the Investment Club. The Active Minds Club is all about more the emotional and mental social support group, and they want to change the like, culture of the community and kind of bring more support that way. I kind of forgot a little bit of what they said, but that is just their main, they want to just spread awareness and just create the community to be like safer for the students on campus. And then the Investment Club, they were also approved. They want to teach students how to invest in the stock market and kind of like what we were talking about when we were in the summit. They are going to start off with a simulation to do this, and then once they do more fundraising, then they are going to be able to invest their actual money to actually invest in stocks. And I think they are planning to do more than just that with investment. And then Dr. Hazmanly came today. She was discussing the Dress for Success event that will happen in a couple of weeks. Next week is the men's one, and then I believe around April 10th, April 11th is for the women. And then she also talked about the job fair that will be held in a couple of weeks as well. The BSU is also happening next week, actually, so it's fairly quickly. Get your tickets if you're going. What else occurred? And then prior to spring break, what we ended up doing, student government did something called Cookie for Your Thought. So we were giving out cookies, and we were just asking students what they would like to do to make the campus better and how it can be a better environment as they go to classes, go to clubs, just more involvement to see. And a lot of them brought up food issues. They want to see more of a variety. They want to, like, when it comes to clubs, they want to see like the times change because typically they meet on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and some clubs meet on Fridays, and considering there's not a lot of classes on Fridays, students don't want to come to campus then. That's not a good motivator. What else did they discuss? Some expressed that they want to see more programs in their majors. And then another thing too is that apparently in the dorms, some RAs aren't going, following protocol, so that, one student recommended to do a background check on them because some might feel entitled to not follow those policies or the rules as they should be respected or with integrity. The SJA also wants to meet with Chartwells because with the amount of issues that have been occurring, we just want to have like a one-on-one conversation with them to see, to get more of an insight of the company. And then there was just little things like students want to see like hand sanitizers being constantly refilled, the plumbing into Conic was another thing, and then advertising like job positions like in Drummond, or not even just like job positions or all the opportunities. They want to see the club events that are occurring. They want to see the, I guess, any resources available to students. They want that to be projected in Drummond because that is like the big social gathering or just where we go when we're on our breaks. And one last thing I guess I'll say is that I think Dr. Jordan should bring back the fireside chats that he did last year. They were really helpful because with the student leaders, that's, that's just secluded to them. It's not open to like regular commuter students or residence students. Like when I was just a regular transfer student last semester, that was a great opportunity to meet you. That was a great opportunity to discuss issues that I was pleased with, and I believe you should bring that back.
Thank you.
Of course.
Questions from Maya from the board?
I have one. Well, how do we go about, how do we go about helping, do we, changing times of the students' meet? Friday, you're right. As soon as you said Friday, I was like, hmm, there's less campus attendance that day. Is there something that we need to do? Peter, do you know?
Well, it's a calendar issue, and so we can take that up with the calendar.
Okay, okay, okay.
See what we can do there.
And Chartwells is the food?
That's the food company, yes.
I'll add that years ago, I think maybe my first year on the board, maybe second, we had, we had a different food service provider.
Yes.
And we had students meet. It actually improved things. There's a little, like, I shouldn't say, it wasn't just random students, there was a little committee appointed amongst student government. They met to discuss, and I believe the dorm students were involved as well.
Okay.
And I want to say that if, if I remember correctly, I heard the same thing. You want more options, but also more healthy, fresh options, things like that.
Yes. I also did speak with someone, and then I guess the opportunities with the food, or students would meet with Chartwells, I believe, for us, I don't remember when they met with them. And then they tried lowering prices by like $2, but then the following semester after that, they raised it above like the price that the student or whoever tried to lower it. So they are raising the prices and they're not accommodating to like, I guess, the students' needs. Like obviously, I know they have different policies, but.
And I will say that Chartwells has been quite open to talking to students and getting student input and making adjustments, especially in terms of menus. So we can and will continue to encourage students to, to make a point of having an audience with the manager.
Right.
And we can make sure we arrange that through student activities as well.
Well, like, one of the main things too was that, you know, on the weekends, so they only have like the grocery options available to the students, and they don't have any hot food services. And I was talking to a faculty member, and then they told me that there is a stove apparently in Conklin that is not like, that is closed off now. So I wasn't sure why that is still closed off because those dorms.
Do you mean the food service area that's in the dorm?
No, there's like apparently an actual kitchen with like a stove.
No, that's, that's there. It's, it was shut down because, yeah, it's in the atrium. It was closed because there wasn't enough business to keep it open for, to make it profitable for the company.
So why can't students, like, bring their own foods to cook it themselves?
We'll have to look into that, but I'm guessing insurance, there's probably be some things about that because it wasn't set up for lots of people to use, but there could be discussion.
Yeah.
If students want to cook.
If they want to clean.
Yeah, they want to clean too.
Like one stove? It would just be like a good opportunity because if like, say like we have something like that Marist does, like their, they can use their card like off-campus, like ShopRite or whatever. So if they go and grocery shop for themselves, what if they want to make a home-cooked meal if the Drummond isn't open for the hot food service?
That's a good point.
That's a good thing, and it teaches them good life skills down the road.
That's why you're a leader. You're already telling the advantages of this. Life skills down the road! We will follow through, Maya, as always. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Thank you for that very thorough report. This brings me to my report, and I'll try to go quickly. On March 18th, we had, we held the Until Help Arrives Safety Training. This training actually improves safety skills of faculty and staff, and also demonstrates compliance with requirements for Narcan use, i.e. to help opioid emergencies. So this was a good thing that we did, and they are now, we have Narcan Kits installed at 19 locations in the main campus, Fishkill Airport and Family Partnership Services Center. Wesley Lee, who's an adjunct faculty member here in the Government and Economics Department, was recently honored with a monument erected in recognition of his achievements by the Poughkeepsie Alliance. Those monuments honored Mr. Lee and five other local individuals, including Barbara Jeter Jackson, a longtime county legislator, county legislator. And these are located at the new Corey Ingram Circle and Champions Walk at the intersection of Creek Road and Smith Street in Poughkeepsie, about one mile from the DCC campus. If you haven't seen it, you should go because they're pretty interesting to see. On March 20th, which was just, is that last week?
Yes.
Sorry, it's kind of a little busy. We welcomed SUNY Chancellor John King and Commissioner of the New York Office for People with Developmental Disabilities, or OPWDD, Carrie Neifeld, to campus, along with government community leaders, representatives from other SUNY schools, to celebrate the success of the Direct Support Professional Microconventional Program. This event recognized students in the first cohort who have completed a microconventional already. There was one person who graduated with finishing the second and the third, I was very proud to see. And it serves as a platform for an exciting announcement that we're going to, that the governor and the legislature have, I think it was 32 million, something?
Yeah.
32 million to expand this program across the state, also to make sure that the state, that we think six more community college campuses, also to make sure that it'll go on till 2029 or 2030.
Thirty.
Twenty thirty. This was originally envisioned as a program just for this year and next, but the excitement, remember we had 30 students in our first cohort and 173, I believe, in the second. Remember, these individuals help people of all walks of life who have any kind of neurodiverse learning issue, any kind of physical developmental disability, so, including in some cases age. But as I've said before, I know someone who did this, and he's even telling me, he did it while I was going through college and getting his master's, but the idea that you would have now have standards, again, so that there, you can say, yes, I'm, I know what I'm doing, is great. I got to sit in the audience with some of the students, and as the Commissioner Neifeld was saying, that she'd been talking to students who had been through this, who said, you know, I could take things I learned in class directly back to my work the next day. What was nice was, is there are 30 students next to me going, yeah, that's right, yeah! But what? We don't get that kind of student input back that directly that often, I promise you. So it was also, some of the two students, graduating students who spoke were both so moving, one because she was so funny and a pip. This is a student who went back to school at 66, and she's going to go back and be a DSP now at her alma mater, Cardinal Spelman High School in the Bronx. That was like a big one for all of us because she concluded her statement by saying, Mark Twain says the two most important days in your life are the day you're born and the day you figure out why. Thank you for giving me the reason to figure out why.
That's really.
Also, we've discussed before, I have the Open Educational Resources Movement, and that's OER, which replaces traditional and very expensive textbooks with free or low-expense open publications. In other words, available online. These are selected, vetted and customized by faculty. This has been going on for several years. We wanted to document the amounts for you. So the amount of student savings in fall 2023 by going to OERs are $521,600. 123, 24 was $14,400 in student savings, and for this spring, $386,700. That means for the total academic year, student savings have been almost $1 million. So may I please compliment faculty and staff, et cetera, for going through this process? Enrollment in student success. Martin Newkirk, who serves as a Board of Directors member for the United Way of Texas Orange Region, representing DCC, has been honored with the Special Recognition Award for 20 years of service. And now something that we've all been sort of waiting for, we actually, DCC Caris has connected more than 105 students this year to $203,000 in emergency funds so far. Women's softball has made its return to competition for the first time since before the pandemic. The team's inaugural game will be an away match on March 26 at Camden. The first home game is scheduled here for March 30 against Monroe Bronx. And the gentleman you see here, the tall ones that you've been seeing here for a while, come from the men's basketball team. They finished the season as the number one seed in Region 15 with a runner-up in the Region 15 Tournament. Their final overall record was 23-6 with Coach Robert Piano, winning Coach of the, yes, winning Coach of the Year. Scott Schnickenberg, will you please introduce everyone for us, if you can?
So to introduce Coach Piano and all his players, as you said, they've been very successful the past few years. But in addition to that, I think, but also we should note is the ties and connection that they can support services on campus. The Tutoring Centers, EOP, Trio, Writing Center, Science Center, we're going to be a part of that, and that's what we can accomplish with, that's the message.
Thank you, Scott. Want to add any words? Any words?
They're annoyed with me with the academic resources. I funnel to them in our group chat all the time, but that's about it. This is my third year here, and as I've gotten to know staff in different departments, I was talking prior, this institution has phenomenal resources between some of the departments you mentioned with EOP and Trio. I've known Melissa for the three, she's been phenomenal, and the Math and Writing Center, or Science Center, excuse me, the Writing Center. We work in a learning commons quite often, and I had a couple of them there today. We're used to these academic work sessions where they say, why am I coming back? And so we do it. Tomorrow we'll be back there again. But all the resources have significantly helped myself and my, one of my assistants here, Justin, can help us with the kids and continue to promote academic success because as much as they think basketball will always continue, it will stop at some point, but the academics is what we're trying to impress and stimulate within them that, you know, you have to have a Plan B, and if you want to continue playing from here, that's going to happen first. So we're trying our best to continue to push that and excel with the academic resources. And the institution and the departments have made it very easy and more accessible for the kids to have academic growth, especially, as also mentioned, Scott, with them, they and a lot of them are COVID kids, so that's, that's been a huge learning curve for me since my first two years. The gentleman next to me, he's an older kid, they were, got the high school education that I also received with a lot of support, and a lot of them were held accountable, whereas these kids aren't as used to that. So that's been a huge curve for me this year with. So that's been a huge curve for me this year with helping them learn what education looks like in support when a lot of them, they didn't get that from, whether it was their sophomore year or were in a COVID environment. So a big learning curve for me this year, but the school's been phenomenal with all the help to them. So I credit all the academic resources that have helped us and the team do well, and trying to continue to do better academically.
May we credit you for also making sure that you're sticking to that plan? So thank you very much. And by the way, congratulations, gentlemen. Occasionally someone will say, I offer words of wisdom and encouragement. I don't really have any words of wisdom for you, but I want to encourage you to continue to play, and the best way that you continue to play is going to also continue your academic career. And that, by the way, will also provide lifetime learning skills, as Maya just said, because if you're successful, if you're successful as an athlete, it's not as easy as hiring a money manager and expecting him to take care of stuff, believe me. You need to understand how your finances go because there are plenty of people who can be shyster-y on that kind of stuff. Understanding business plans, understanding how to invest money, all goes a long way towards your future success in life. So we're going to try to take some pictures with you after the meeting, if that's okay with you guys to stay here for a second.
I just want to echo that, you have to, I mean, your playing is important, but what's your long-term goal? Even if you're in the NBA, you want to know your, where your money is, how it's being spent, and even an MBA career is going to end at some point. What is your long-term goal? So I'm going to put on my mom hat, I have boys. You have to know your studies, study, study, study. Your playing is important, but your study is just important. You have a long future ahead of you. Congratulations to all of you, but take advantage of those resources.
And that concludes my report. The next item on the agenda is reported by President Jordan.
So just two things. The first is that I want to mention that on March 3rd, we hosted DeeDee Barrett and her office in terms of launching Women's History Month here at DCC in this very same room, celebrating one of our past deans, who was Susan Hochhauser. It was a great event, a great way of kicking off Women's History Month. I want to yield the rest of my time so that we can do a photo op with our students, or basketball player, student athletes, and so that they can interact with members of the board. So that's it for my report.
Are there any items for other business? There being none, the date of the next meeting is April 30th, 2024. May I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Well, one of you can second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Universal aye. Thank you all, and thank you to our media group televising this, or live streaming.
So if we can have students come up front and coaches, we'll do a photo op.